Let's call this meeting in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens, amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Alan here, Green, LaFour.
Here.
Mistravich.
Here.
Rindell.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Motion to excuse Jamie Green from tonight's meeting, she gave us notice two weeks ago at our last meeting that she would be out of town.
I'll make some support.
Most been made and supported, any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, we move on approval of minutes for the city council meeting of November nineteenth, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Most have been made and supported, is there any discussion on the minutes? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, we now move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items, I believe everybody that's here is here on agenda items, okay, we will move on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes?
Nope.
Being not, a motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Most been made and supported, is there any discussion on it? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Most been made and supported, there is no discussion on the consent agenda, motion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, we move on to items for consideration, we have six this evening, the first one being consideration of approving the West Richmond Site Condominium slash Teltor Contracting Company, Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider approving a condominium site plan review for the West Richmond condominium development, which is a fifty-four lot site condominium, single-family home development on twenty-five and a half acres of property located directly west of the Richwood Forest subdivision. The property begins at the end of Woodside, Richwood, and Diane Lane, and is approximately eighteen hundred feet west of Forest. This development has gone through the Planning Commission twice, first for a conceptual review, and then later on for a site plan review where the developer, Teltor Contracting, had incorporated recommendations made by the Planning Commission, and ultimately on the master deed by our city attorney. So, everything has been done and is in order, the next step is to come to the city council, if approved tonight, then we'll be able to begin development. At the very end of the development, once all of the infrastructure is in place, we will receive a set of as-built drawings, which will then come back to the city council for final approval of everything that went in, but as I mentioned, once this is approved, or if approved tonight, they would be able to commence construction.
Very good, thank you, is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve the condominium site plan review for the West Richmond condominium development consisting of fifty-four lots and twenty-five point five acres of property located at the western terminus of Woodside Drive, Richwood Lane, and Diane Lane.
Support.
Most been made and supported, discussion?
Appreciate all the work that went into our background brief, explaining everything and laying it out, made it a lot easier to read than just looking at a map, that was really nice.
Anything else? It'd be a nice project out there, we worked almost a year, I think it was a year ago that that planning commission that it was introduced and...
It was November of eight seventeen when they came in for conceptual, and November of eighteen when they got planning commission approval.
Yeah, it's nice to see especially a local contractor, families had his history here, went way beyond what they could have built in there, it could have been a very tightly built area out there according to our zoning, and they chose to go to the higher highway as far as I'm concerned, and really did a lot of nice things, tied into all three streets, you know, it's a, it's a great looking subdivision is what it looks like to us on our planning commission, so, nice job, anything else?
The planning commission, do they do the extra lights in this?
I've, I've met with the developer who had no problem doing the extra light on the furthest north south street to the west, it'll be a mid block, roughly mid-block, we'll kind of look, it'll probably match up the one that's on the north south street to the, to the east there.
And then any more on that connecting sidewalk, I know there's some...
We're working on it with the city engineers, the developer doesn't have an issue with putting a sidewalk there, it's kind of, it will need to go in essentially over top of the drain, so there may be some working, certainly we need to work with the McComb County Public Works Department who controls that drain, and there might be things that they want in order to have that sidewalk within the drain, I think it'll more than likely end up being something that if we can do it would need like safer out-to-school grant funding, some, something like that, because I think there'll be a little bit more infrastructure the way the lots are, there's one place where it essentially needs to go, and that's within the drain, the contractors or the developers not opposed to that at all, it's just kind of working it out with the county what would be required to do it.
That was the sidewalks everybody in, in the know on it, for connecting into the schools and along the future sewer drain system.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
That's all.
I happened to run into Ken Goike, who now is an assistant to Candace Miller at the drain, he was informing me there are some grants available for drains that may need cleaning out or improvement of some kind, and said that he had looked at this particular drain and said, hey, if there's something that the county and the city can go together, so if the county, the city, and the contractor needs to do anything out there, I don't know that, we had heard that...
I know as part of their development, they have to clean the drain, that's kind of their, one of their requirements from the Drain Commission on that particular drain.
Okay.
And so that notice was sent to everyone connected to that, some of you who live within that drain may have received that notice.
Okay.
And, and so that's part of that requirement, but we'll certainly talk to Ken and find out on other sections of that drain where it's outside of the development, if there's an opportunity there for to work together.
Yeah, great, he said there was, there was grants available for, you know, to get you to meet all the criteria of the grant to get it, but he said, give them a call. Okay, any else? Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, we look forward to that growth in our community. Item number two is consideration of Little League banner and sign request, Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider an across-the-road banner and signage request from Richmond Little League, their online registration is currently open, and they'll be having two onsite registration events, January sixteenth and the twenty-sixth, when the, the request came in for the banner and the signage, they were requesting a banner across the street, and then kind of yard signs that would be placed down at the base of the city limit signs, we've allowed like the senior helpers to advertise the summer concerts that way, they had originally asked for, I believe, late, late January through early February, however, I did email back and forth with Josh Fouchet, and had an alternate set of dates for him on the banner due to the winter, good old winter days potential in, in a banner that Tifa had approved, and so I had recommended having the banner up from January eleventh through January twenty-eighth, then we'd take that down and put up the Winterfest banner, and then, but due to having to go a little forward, I recommended that the signs at the base go from January eleventh through January third, so, a little bit longer on the yard, or February third, thank you, a little bit longer on the yard signs to kind of make up for the fact that they're moving their date on the banner.
Okay, very good, David, would you like to address the city council on the issue at all?
Since Josh Fouchet actually spearheaded this, and all the information, I just wanted to say, actually you just brought it up, but basically, I mean, it's a fantastic thing for us for getting our name out there, for having registration open, which obviously the more people know about it, the more people see it, the better, which as long as, I was talking to John before the meeting, basically we wanted it, there was no set time, as long as it was after the holidays basically, because nobody's thinking baseball this month especially, so, and our, and I know our tryouts are getting towards the end of February, but other than that, I think the, the dates work out great, I just wasn't sure, and this is something that I should have talked to Josh before coming, but do we know the specific locations for those signs, or was it...
I'll, I'll email it to you, and certainly, with yard signs, you can have them, what we're allowing when we say at the base of the city limit signs, that's kind of above and beyond, if like for instance, one of your members lives in town, as long as they put the sign between their house and the sidewalk in their front yard, they could put it there as well.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
But I'll give you the locations where we allow them.
Okay, great, I guess the biggest thing was just to make sure that we had enough, that was, that was all, I just wanted to make sure we were covered, so, but other than that, that's, that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions of the president of Little League? The new president of the Little League? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event application from Richmond Little League to have an across-the-banner in conjunction with the registration event to be displayed January eleventh two thousand nineteen through, I'm sorry, through January twenty-eighth two thousand nineteen, and yard signs that will be, will be placed at the city limits signs from January eleventh two thousand nineteen to February third two thousand nineteen.
Support. Most been made and supported, any discussion?
I'll tell you one thing, we put up one set of new banner posts, and I think we're going to have to start looking real close to getting another set up, because everybody's starting to use it, it's a great way to advertise.
I agree.
You know, so, I mean, I know we have plans, but they're very expensive.
Yeah, I think we'll need to make sure it gets in this budget.
Yeah.
I mean, because...
Yeah, we're gonna have to try to squeeze it in there somehow, but boy, everybody's using it, which I've heard nothing but good things about, people are saying, wow, that's great to know what's going on, you know?
It stands out.
Yeah, it definitely stands out, yeah, okay, any other audience comments on this?
One thing I want to add was, it's fantastic, there's, there's definitely a fan in town that even being a lifelong Richmond, you know, citizen, I didn't even knew existed, and then you go through town, you see them across the street, it's, it's great.
Yeah, we have plans for, our streetscape plan calls for three more?
A total of, well, potentially four.
Two more on Main Street, and then two on Division Road.
Two more on Main, were we going to the south end also?
There was one that we were looking at for like down by Old City Hall, I mean, some of them, we have to kind of do a little more research on the engineering side, but one at like roughly Old City Hall, and the fire hall would be the two on Main Street.
Yeah, okay, all right, back to the table, anything else? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, and they will get in contact with the city.
I'll, I'll reach out to them.
Very good, thank you. All right, item number three is consideration of approving resolution number twenty-eighteen dash sixteen code enforcement Richmond Township, Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Richmond and Richmond Township to have the city of Richmond Police Department assist them with township code enforcement, or assist the township code enforcement officer with her duties when she is out in the field conducting code enforcement, this is actually the second time we'd be doing an extension, the first time we approved this resolution in agreement was a one-year term, we didn't know how well it would work, it worked very well, so then we did a three-year extension, and this is the end of that three years, so, we're coming back for a three-year extension, both parties believe it's working well, and I've let them know our, our wages have gone up for the part-time officers, but other than that, it's, it's working well, again, our police department doesn't do any of the code enforcement, they're simply there more as escorts and helping, and are a witness if something happens, but are more there for kind of protection of the township code enforcement officer.
Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixteen, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Richmond and Richmond Township to have the city of Richmond Police Department assist the township code enforcement officer.
Support.
Most been made and supported, discussion? One of the questions I have is chief, like, do you guys keep record of how much time, court, did it take a lot of time?
No, actually, actually, the, the cap, if you will, on this is, we've never reached that so far in the agreement, so.
Good.
It's, it's working out well.
Good, great, I just had a lady ask me...
And chief, I think, I was talking to the chief about this earlier, I think it's, is it once a month roughly that you're going out there?
Roughly, once a month, and then occasional, there's something comes up where they gotta act immediately, and they give us a holler, and we work it out, so, but it's working out well, it's not real time-consuming, and it's working out for both Richmond Township and the city of Richmond, so.
Good.
It's nice to do that neighborly thing.
And we're using a reserve officer?
Actually, I occasionally go out there just to get out of the office a little bit, so.
Does he get lost when he gets out?
It's set up for a part-time officer's wages, and that's where I was mentioning, our part-timers get, recently became part of the union, have a different wage scale, so I did make sure the township knows that, but, yeah, depending on, as the chief mentioned, oftentimes it's once a month for an hour, so, ends up being, you know, sometimes easier just to have chief run out there versus trying to find somebody, but, but it's set up for a part-time officer, and they understand that that's kind of at our discretion, if it works better for us, that if they get a part-time officer, that's what they're gonna get.
And they do give us a lot of lead time, so we can schedule somebody, but, you know, it's just, the way it works out, it works out real easy, so.
It's basically just providing like a security guard type service, correct?
A little more than that, but, yeah.
Hold on, hold on, you just said you were going out there, I mean, how much more are we getting?
My driver.
Yeah.
My driver.
Okay, any other comments, any other questions or comments on the motion? Any other comments from the audience? Back to the table?
Just one of the, it's in the background brief, but I know it's important to council that we do put the township code enforcement signs, so that people understand why our cars out there.
Yeah, very good, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, item number four, consideration of library contract with Richmond Township, Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving an agreement for library services between the Township of Richmond and the city of Richmond, Lois Wagner Memorial Library, on November sixth two thousand eighteen, the Richmond Township residents passed a five-year library millage in the amount of three tenths of a mil, this was in order to meet the criteria of the suburban library cooperative, so that their residents could receive full-service library cards through the co-op, previously, we received their penal fines roughly seventeen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred dollars in that neighborhood a year, which only gave them courtesy cards, the courtesy cards previously only allowed them to check out a book that was on the shelf of the Lois Wagner Memorial Library, but by passing this millage, that will roughly increase the city revenues by about fifty-one thousand in the, in that neighborhood, they would then be able to qualify for a full library card through the cooperative.
Very good, thank you, is there a motion before discussion?
I make a motion...
Make the motion, go ahead.
To approve the agreement for library services between the Township of Richmond and the city of Richmond Lois Wagner Memorial Library.
Support, most been made and supported, any discussion? Julianne, anything to add to this, or...
Just having a secret question that we've been serving for a long time, would you give us full service, that would be nice.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on the communication in regards to this, I mean, obviously it was on the ballot, so people know if they're paying attention and voted, but for the residents of Richmond Township, are we, is there a communication that goes out?
Yes, they have a couple different ways of doing it, and we, when we met with them, we talked to Bob Zalka and Cindy Green, you know, the treasurer and the supervisor out there, they have a newsletter that goes out, and they also have like an email blast system that will send out emails to all of their residents, and so if this is approved here at this board, and then at the township board, we're gonna help them draft kind of a press release that would go out to all the residents, and have like a little flyer out at the township hall for those residents coming in to make payments, would see how they can take advantage of the full-service library card, as well as, you know, where to go to sign up, those, I think there's roughly nine hundred township residents currently that have a courtesy card, and those cards will automatically be converted over to a full-service card, they don't need to come in and get a new card issued, so, the co-op is able to do that.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, it was just a part of my concern was about expectations, that now that it passed, maybe they might be thinking, oh, I'm gonna get a card, that's not the case, it's more of a pull, you have to ask for it, and then you get it, so, I didn't want somebody to come and say, hey, where's my card, where's my card?
Sure.
You have to make sure that they, you can have a card, you just have to fill it for them, and you're good to go.
Ran into a lady today who, is Richmond Township, uses the library, and she was bringing up to me how she had seen our police car out there, and she was glad that we were patrolling Richmond Township now, and I assured her that it was code enforcement more than likely, or chief taking a ride and was lost out in the country, one of the two.
Wrong turn?
Yeah, wrong turn probably, yeah, but anyhow, and so I corrected her on that also, but I also said, well, that millage that you just passed is gonna give you full use of the library, but what do you mean? I go, well, you can order stuff now, it's not just what's in-house, and she had no idea, and she's a user, you know, so, I think that's something we're gonna have to get out there and make it real clear to them, that, hey, you're paying for this now, you know, state, state now allows you to have full service, just like a resident of the city of Richmond.
And a nice thing that you brought up, the cars, because we do get that question from time to time, and certainly the, the code enforcement car is not out there doing patrols, oftentimes if they do see our car and it doesn't have the, the magnetic sign for township code enforcement, oftentimes our officers have to go out to serve subpoenas or interview witnesses related to crimes that might have occurred in the city, so, any of the four surrounding townships, you might see a Richmond car out in Casco or out in Columbus, due to the fact that they're working a case related to something that happened in Richmond, but the witness might be from Casco, you know, and so there are times, and I've gotten that question from residents, so that's why I kind of wanted to elaborate a little bit on that, is there are times when our car might be out in the township.
Yeah, yeah, but I think kind of going along with what Mike is, is getting at is, for me, it's, we need to let them know that now you're getting all these services, and you weren't before, period, so, and then, is the Memphis Library being its Richmond Township, are they in the cooperative?
They are not.
They are not, okay.
They're held by the system.
Okay, okay, all right, anything else on this? Any other audience comments on this? Back to the table, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, item number five is consideration of revised cemetery layout, Mr. City Manager?
In two thousand twelve, city council authorized the sale of lots in the newest portion of the cemetery, section nine, at that time, section nine was designed to only allow flush headstones, it had wide access paths with kind of memorial gardens where our family could, you know, place a statue further away from the graves, the intent of that was to kind of aid very quick maintenance of the new section, however, as we went through and actually started to develop that section, it was important to not only the council, but the community, I think, to still allow upright headstones in the newer sections. Those changes were made, and the new section does allow upright headstones, however, we never went back and kind of took a look at kind of how the cemetery was laid out, and they were switched from graves that were going east to west kind of orientation to graves that were going north to south, however, kind of on further review, our public service director, Jim Gutzinger, has come up with an alternate layout that would actually enhance the layout of the cemetery and increase the number of available lots by three hundred and fifty, so, long-term, we feel this is a better option for our cemetery.
Very good, is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the revising the cemetery layout with the majority of the graves changing to the east-west orientation.
Support.
Most been made and supported, any discussion? I'm glad to see that, Jim, that you found this, we never did go back, you know, after we decided to go with upright monuments, we never even thought it would make any difference whatsoever, so, adding a hundred and fifty more sites to our cemetery, it's huge for us.
Three fifty, yes.
Three fifty.
Oh, I thought it was a hundred and fifty, get those glasses back on.
Yeah.
So, yeah, three fifty, exactly, so that's, that's, I mean, what are we, what are we doing, I mean, on average year, are we doing thirty, I don't...
Probably not that much.
Well, we've been selling, I would say five or six of online releases last year.
Okay, okay, well, good.
This is a busy year.
Yeah, yeah, sadly, it has been a busy year in Richmond, but, okay, great, any other discussion? Any audience comments? Back to the table, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass, thanks for finding that, Jim, that's huge for us.
Absolutely.
Item number six, consideration of resolution number twenty-eighteen dash seventeen and the introduction and first reading of ordinance number one-six-four slash prohibition of recreational marijuana establishments within the city of Richmond, Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider resolution two thousand eighteen dash seventeen, which states the city's intent to prohibit recreational marijuana establishments within the city of Richmond, and there's also a second motion, which is for ordinance one-sixty-four, that would give introduction and first reading to this ordinance, that would prohibit recreational marijuana establishments within the city of Richmond, shortly after the passage of the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, ballot proposal one of two thousand eighteen, many communities started to look at this issue, the MML, clearly there's going to be probably other laws coming on top of the passage of proposal one, there's kind of some uncertainty on where this will all shake out in the end, and so, our recommendation from, from administration side of things is to prohibit them at this time, that doesn't mean that council at a later date couldn't come back and, and change the ordinance, but right now, we, we feel more comfortable passing both of these, prohibiting it, kind of making sure, and taking a longer, more comprehensive look at this issue, the medical marijuana laws that were enacted and passed had kind of the opt-out was automatic, unless the community was proactive in passing and allowing establishments, you were kind of the default status was prohibiting them, the recreational is the opposite of that or converse of that, and you have to actually take proactive action to prohibit them, again, the, the resolution we're doing tonight is something so that we can put the state on notice, because there's kind of a quick timetable on how some of these things are potentially, depending on how courts and people look at, at the passage of the law and the enactment of the law, so the resolution kind of gives notice to the state of our intent of what we're doing with the ordinance, the, and I apologize, both the ordinance and the resolution here tonight, there's a couple places where it talks about county of McComb that we would need to amend both of those to change to say counties of McComb and St. Clair, since the city lies in both counties, but with that, I'll turn it over to council.
Okay. Is there a motion for the resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash seventeen, which announces the city's intent to prohibit recreational marijuana establishments within the city of Richmond.
Support.
Most been made and supported, discussion? As the city manager said, so much of it is up in the air, we don't know what, some of the laws and the penalties, I don't know that we know any thing here yet, and it's so confusing when you read various articles on it, it says even if you opt in, or if you don't do anything, so you automatically opt in on the use, that nothing can be done until two thousand twenty, well, I, I don't, was that in the original thing that we voted on, or where's that, where did they come up with that date?
The...
Did anybody find that?
Lara, which is the licensing and regulatory agency.
that nothing can be done until 2020. Well, I don't, was that in the original thing that we voted on? Or where's that? Where did they come up with that date? Did anybody find that?
LARA, which is the Licensing and Regulatory Agency of Michigan, will be drawing up licensing requirements, and I believe that is where the one-year timeframe is kind of coming in.
Okay, all right, it's going to take them a year to come up with the-
With the rules and regulations. Similar to the Medical Marijuana Facilities Act, it took about a year for those to, for the first licenses of those to actually get approved after the previous law was passed.
And I know I've discussed with some members of council, this doesn't prevent somebody from utilizing marijuana in their home. This is, what we're doing is preventing kind of the commercial operations of the recreational marijuana.
Well, you and I talked about that briefly one day, and the law says that it has to be a thousand feet from a school.
If we were approving the recreational establishments of like a grow facility or a warehousing operation, or I think there's roughly five or six different types of businesses. You, for example, you could allow somebody to have a retail operation, but decide that we don't want to have a warehouse or a transfer facility. So, again, there's like five or six. I think medical is one, and recreational is another, on five or six. But those commercial establishments, yes, I believe would need to be a thousand feet from a school.
Which really would inhibit-
Unless the city allows a waiver.
Oh.
If you read, yeah, if you read the actual language, it does give the city the authority to reduce that distance if they see a reason to do so. However, if you are a marijuana user and you live next to a church and you smoke in your house, you're still allowed to do that.
Yeah.
It does not impugn you on that. It's only for record, actual commercial facilities, like grow or dispensary or any of the six other categories that there are for recreation.
Does the law, as it's written right now, does it limit to the inside of your house?
Yeah, you are not allowed to walk down the street smoking.
Or outside in your property? I mean, is it allowable on your property? Can you sit on your front porch and-
Well, that's a good question. It says not allowed to do it at public places. So, is your home, your home? So, is that by definition a public place?
It's one of those things that will probably be worked out over the-
It hasn't spelled out completely yet?
Yeah, correct.
Or it hasn't been challenged?
It hasn't been challenged in court, more importantly, correct. Yeah. If your front porch is considered your house, or is that public, I'm sure those things will be taken up in court.
Obviously, you can't walk down the street or go to a public park or anything that's open to the public.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion on this?
Yes, I have a question, maybe more hypothetical. There is, as the mayor mentioned, there's so much material that you can read from MML and all over the place. It's hard to keep track of it. And then looking where he, in the background brief, we saw the local election results for not only the city of Richmond but the four surrounding townships. And it was interesting to see that of those five municipalities or communities, that the city of Richmond was actually the only one that the residents or the voter, voted, voted, registered voters approved it and said yes, as opposed to no, which happened in all the other ones. So, my question is, and I think the background brief and the city manager's comments are, once that we go through and say we go along with this motion and recommendation to not allow dispensaries and growing facilities, commercial facilities, and it's probably something that'll come out later, but would our residents, as being in favor of it based on the vote of the people of the city, put together, say, a petition that says, hey, we, you know, we voted yes for this, but we don't, we would, we know, you know, but we don't have a local place to do it. Could they put a, get a petition together to maybe go back to the ballot to allow?
Yes.
I know it's hypothetical, but I'm just thinking-
Wouldn't that be a referendum? And I think probably may have the answer to that.
Two-thirds majority, I think.
Pardon me?
I think it's a two-thirds majority of the public to pass that referendum.
But it is certainly something that will come up in the future. I'm sure there will be other municipalities that also voted overall in favor of it and are recommending to prohibit. So, it'll be probably coming up as a lawsuit soon enough or a referendum in that way.
Yeah, I think there's discussion that there is that possibility. Lennox Township also-
And Columbus.
Passed it, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Columbus also.
Yeah.
Yeah, Columbus.
I'm sorry about that.
Why, yes.
And again, there's, certainly, we're not saying that they can't smoke recreational marijuana in their homes. It's just the commercial operation of it. So, it's not that, and I understand what you're referring to, Mayor Potem, is that they might not be able to go and buy it here in the downtown. But I think there might be, and I know there's one community to our south that's actively kind of pursuing it, so I know they won't have to go very far, is my belief.
Anecdotally, if I could, Colorado's been like into this for five years, and now almost seventy-five of the communities, percent of the communities that have opted out, have changed their mind and are opting out now.
Really?
Based on what they're seeing over there, so.
The crime rate is raised because of it?
Crime rate, homeless, ER visits for the children, youth by youth are acting up sooner, a lot of things. It's just they decided to opt out, so.
Chief, I notice a lot of local law enforcement agencies taking this stance, requesting their city council do the same what we're doing tonight. Is that, does this department stance also at this point?
It would, I know Sterling Heights is asking for more officers if it passes, and a lot of the other agencies are. It would obviously handcuff us as far as enforcement and things like that if, because there's just so many rules and regulations. We don't know what we don't know yet. So, that's, that's the unknown, which is scary.
That's what bothers me the most about allowing it, is we don't know. The state doesn't seem to know, and, you know, as our planners told us, it's going to take them a year to even license it. I don't know what the laws are going to be. I don't think LARA has the ability to establish the laws. That would have to go through the House and Senate probably for the state of Michigan to pass laws.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's... But again, it doesn't stop you from the use of, according to whatever the law states right now. That's not what we're talking about here. Just the fact that we don't want to store in our community right now until we find out what the, what the rules are. And then we'll take another look at it when that's established. I think that's, that should be true in any type of instance, whether it's marijuana, drugs, or it's anything else. We need to know what the laws are before we can establish a good ordinance also. So, it's, you're better off establishing an ordinance that says you can't do it. That's simple, like we're doing right now, and then wait and see what, what the state comes up with. I think that's just good, that's good government as far as I'm concerned. Anything else? Any other audience comments on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also have the first reading of an ordinance. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to give introduction and first reading to ordinance one sixty-four, which will prohibit recreational marijuana establishments within the city of Richmond.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion on this? This is formalizing what it is that we just passed, so that we have to have an ordinance, so that it has some meat to it.
Yes.
Stands, stands the test.
And then at the first meeting, or the second meeting of this month, will be the second reading and potential adoption, and we'll make sure the ordinance had, or ordinance language has been amended to include St. Clair County.
Very good, very good. Anything else, council? Any other comments from the public? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to city manager's comments, sir.
Just want to mention that this Friday is our community tree lighting at seven o'clock, and the Santa parade, that's roughly six-thirty. I know one of our banners is up across the street announcing that, and there's lots of flyers and things out there on Facebook. We're trying to kind of beef that up with some other promotions in the business district or districts with kind of a Christmas cash program and window decorating contests through our RPOA. So, it'll be a great time out on Friday night up at the odd, and so hope everyone can come out and make it. I do want to thank Sue Keel from our recreation board. Her, her sister, I think daughter, daughters, and some friends did the trees, not only here in the council chambers, but also the tree and the wreath out in the lobby here. So, they've done that for a couple of years, and it's like-
Looks very nice.
Thank you, or give them a thank you. They do a great job with that. That's it.
Very good. Move on to council comments. Emily?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
John?
Nothing.
Rob?
No, sir.
Douglas?
Michael?
Nothing.
God, what just happened? Seems like since I'm not wearing my glasses, I'm losing some of my memory here, too. What, oh, the, putting up the Christmas lights in the downtown. We had a ton of volunteers this year. It was warm weather. I think that had a lot to do with it, too, but it made it so much easier on all of us Sunday after Thanksgiving to get all the, and also I've had comments on our new ornaments that are up now. They're more colorful. They really stand out, and thank Tifa for financing that or for paying for that. And hopefully we can continue replacing some of the old stuff in the future. So, it looked very, very nice. But thank all those volunteers. Today being the third of December, as the city manager mentions, this Friday, the seventh, is a big day in the city of Richmond. We bring Santa into town, and the parade will start approximately six-thirty at the south end of town, and come around to the north end, and then end up back at the old auditorium on Main Street. And that will be where we have our annual tree lighting there. The Lions also, I believe, have a breakfast at Saint Peter's Church starting at eight AM on the eighth. And we go to the eleventh, and I can't read it. It's too small. I got it circled, but I can't see it here. What's on the cable commission? Cable commission is on the eleventh at seven o'clock right here at City Hall. And then the annual cookie sale at the Lois Wagner Memorial Library will be on the fourteenth, it's a Friday, from one to seven PM. And Santa will also be there on the fourteenth from six to seven. Two weeks from tonight, we will have our next city council meeting. I have a few things here. Again, the hall walking for health put on by the Recreation Department in cooperation with the Richmond Community Schools. Every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, drop-in walking from six to eight PM. The, let's see, all the events that the city manager had brought up. The Historical Society also will be open Friday, December seventh, for a holiday in the village. They'll be open from four to eight, the window decorating contest put on by the Richmond Police Officers Association, and many of the downtown businesses are involved with various things going on, not only Friday the seventh, but throughout the season here. And there will be a $500 cash prize. You must be in attendance at the tree lighting. And you can get your tickets by some of the participating businesses in Richmond. For every $10 you spend, you get a ticket.
Yep.
And I think there was about seven to eight businesses.
Actually, we ended up with twelve, eleven or twelve.
Okay.
Depending on whether one got their occupancy yet that was trying to get open in short order, but yeah. And there's flyers available on our city website that give the location and who those twelve are.
Very good, very good. So, you got a chance of winning $500 next Friday night. Shop Richmond, as they say, shop local. And we appreciate what everybody working together to make it a big weekend, this weekend. Okay, was there anything else that we had to add to the calendar? Being not, we do have a closed session this evening. It will take a roll call vote. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to convene into closed session in accordance with section eight A of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act two-six-seven of nineteen seventy-six, as amended for the purpose of considering a periodic personal evaluation of city manager as requested by the city manager.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion? Being not, roll call vote.
Green, LaFour.
Yes.
Mistravich.
Yes.
Rendell.
Yep.
Ricks.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Motion passes. We will go into closed session, take a five-minute break before we go in there. Okay, we need a motion to reconvene in the open session. I'll make the motion to reconvene in open session.
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any discussion on the motion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to other business. Michael, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as was discussed, the city council meant to discuss the city manager annual evaluation. So, based on that, and we just came out of that, I would like to make a motion to approve the city manager evaluation results. The city council has completed the city manager evaluation with input from all councilors. The city manager scored a three-point-five-five on a four-point-oh scale, which is effective to very effective. We, as a city council, appreciate the work that John does and anticipate future success in leading the city of Richmond. A salary compensation increase will be determined during the time that the non-affiliated employees' compensation is also discussed.
Is there support?
Support.
Most been made and supported. Any further discussion? As Michael's motion makes it very clear, we appreciate our city manager very much in the city of Richmond. Done an excellent job, continues to do an excellent job, and we look forward to working with him and his administration and leading the city of Richmond into the future. Anything else?
Just that I mentioned in closed session that it's reciprocal, and certainly I appreciate the hard work that the council does and view this very much as a team effort. It's not just myself, but the council and administration working together. And so, this council needs to be commended as well.
Thank you, John. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Most been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us.